We still did get a lot out of her, don't get me wrong. And, you know, her spirit and her willingness to help her community and help her nation is truly something to be admired. We're really gonna miss her, but I just wanted to officially thank her tonight on behalf of the Board and behalf of all the residents of Irvington, Westchester, New York, and the United States. So, thank you very much. I'll give it up.
I would like to add to that, that I was so excited to have a useful presence on our Board and getting a point of view about technology and all kinds of stuff the rest of us seem to be a little left out of. So, besides all the things that you have mentioned, Brian, Christina, if we had more time, we could've learned more about all those devices that we know all about. But, thank you, and it was great that you could be part of our group.
I should've probably started my whole ramble saying Christina's last night after her time at the Trustee Department, granted, be picking her out tonight, but this is her last night. She decided not to run for reelection. We're actually very lucky to have Dr. Larry Lonkey, who's gonna be the newest trustee, so welcome aboard a little early, but time will come. I don't know if anyone else wants to say anything. Otherwise, I'll turn over to Joe Arquino from the Rec Department. And Dr. Lonkey.
Well, we just, we really felt that it was the right thing to do to make sure Christina knew how much we thought of her being with us the past two years. It was a pleasure to work with her smile. I remember the first conversation I had with you, you said something which stuck with me, and on a lot of days when things aren't exactly normal, I remember what you said, and you said that you have so many memories of so many great things that happened to you growing up, and when you thought about them, many of them were because of the Rec Department, which is something that was really helpful in getting through some tough things. So, we wish you the best of luck. I am a little angry with you, though, because since you're leaving, they're stealing my chairman. And I'm not too happy about that, but he'll do a great job following in your footsteps. So, on behalf of the Rec Department, the staff, and our PAC, we have this for you just to look at, and that for you to enjoy, that you won't have to be here. Quick funny story, because we wanted to do the right thing. I actually called your dad's restaurant today, and after the person played with me for about 10 minutes as I tried to find out the right bottle of wine to get you, he admitted it was his father, your father that I was speaking to. So, we'd like to present these.
And we got little messages from Miko at the flower shop, too, Christina.
Thank you. Thank you guys. So, the next item on the agenda, back to the regular scheduled agenda, is a Purple Heart Village proclamation. I guess I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas the village of Irvington, in the state of New York, has always supported its military veteran population, and whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or declaration made available to the common soldier, and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with the declared enemy of the United States of America, and whereas the mission of the Military Order of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members and their families, promote patriotism, support legislative initiatives, and most importantly, make sure we never forget. Now therefore I, Brian C. Smith, serving as the Mayor of the Village of Irvington, do hereby proclaim the Village of Irvington as a Purple Heart Village. So, I think we have someone from the Military of the Purple Heart here, so I'd like to present this to you. Thanks very much for all your time. Absolutely. Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention. Great. Thank you. Congratulations. My best last words. Brenda, are you ready now for the presentation, the audit, or are we a little late?
I think maybe later on, Susan.
Okay. Perfect. I was gonna say, I didn't see your notes up. I will start with the announcements. First, there's a public hearing to consider a local law limiting the hours when blasting and rock chipping are permitted. That is scheduled for December 5th, 2016, 7:00 PM in Village Hall. I will make a motion for that. Can I have a second?
A second.
Hall of favor. Next is a check over $25,000, which is for Henderson Truck Equipment, which is a dump truck with a heated spreader. Comes out of the capital, which is $70,462. Take a look at the course with that. The next is the Holiday Tree Lighting Ceremony, December 3rd, at 4:30 PM in the IK Benjamin Community Center, located at 71 Main Street. Can't believe it's that time of year again, but it feels like it today. And then I have one more, also special announcement, which is a statement that I would like to read. On behalf of my colleagues on the Board of Trustees, including Trustee-elect Lonkey, I'd like to read the following statement. Irvington has always prided itself on being a welcoming and safe place for residents and visitors of all races, religions, orientations, and countries of origin. It seems there are many in our nation who are not currently feeling welcome nor safe. We want everyone to know that the Irvington Board of Trustees will never tolerate discrimination of any kind in our village. While we are not aware of any recent acts of intolerance in Irvington, we would like to publicly denounce all such acts that seem to be occurring with more frequency in New York and our nation. These repulsive acts go against everything we stand for as a village and a nation. If anyone witnesses any form of discrimination or intimidation, do not hesitate to immediately call our police department at 591-8080, or contact me or any of our fellow Board members. Thank you. Along those lines, the Governor had also sent an email out, I guess to all elected officials, where he expressed basically the same sentiments I just shared. Additionally, he gave a hotline number for residents who have experienced bias motivated threats, harassment, or discrimination. You can call toll-free at 888-392-3644. But again, feel free to contact anyone on the Board or the Police Department if you see anything. We've always taken these threats very seriously. It's unfortunate that we have to be talking about them at all.
I think that's all gonna be on the website for reference.
Yes.
Thank you for bringing that, Brian.
Sure. Does anyone else have any announcements?
The Mary Jane Shimske's.
Water Wheel. The water housing.
Oh, yes, so it came to my attention, especially because we meet, when we, when the Irvington Housing Committee meets, Rosemary Noonan meets with us and actually acts as our chair, and she responded to a notice that maybe some of you saw that Mary Jane Shimske had sent out, which is to say that the Water Wheel facility in Ardsley has, still has three for sale affordable units. And she suggested that making sure that people locally know about this is helpful, because the units have to have at least two people, and the, and those people must meet the requirements of income below the required level, which is 80% of the median income of Westchester County income at a certain date, which, but Rosemarie Noonan is the person who can provide information, as well as going directly to the Water Wheel condominium. So, we can put some of this on the website as well, if he would qualify for those affordable units. That's it.
So, Brian, can I just remind people again that it's schools in session again, where you've been focusing on trying to increase public awareness about pedestrian safety. You've all seen the yard signs around, and there's also things like bumper stickers and cards being handed out with information about tips for both pedestrians and for drivers. All that material is available for you to share with your family or neighborhood, or in the schools. It's all available up in the lobby of Village Hall.
Any announcements? Move on to correspondence. I'm saving the traffic correspondence until we get the update for the Traffic Committee, I'll just put it there. But with the non-Traffic Committee-related correspondence, there's one on the agenda. There's actually a couple more that came in before our Friday deadline, that I'll add tonight as well. The first one is from David and Cheryl Brandywin. Thank you for inviting some of the residents of South Buckout Street to attend Wednesday's meeting regarding the Astrobuck parking lot proposal. We know you heard our strong opposition to this project, and they want, and do not want to reiterate what was said. We just want to emphasize the following. Astrobuck seemed to threaten us that they would build affordable low-income housing on residential lots in question if we do not permit them to build near their parking lot. We welcome affordable housing in our communities, in line with the state's bill of zoning priority and encourage creation of affordable housing. Number two, no amount of trees or buffering will block our view of the proposed parking lot. Adjacent houses on South Buckout Street are uphill and several stories that have a direct view of the proposed lot, even if it's not visible from the street. Number three, Astrobuck describes the large tract of green space of trees inhabited by birds and wildlife as waste, but is only in poor condition due to Astrobuck's long-term neglect. Number four, the proposal will not solve Astrobuck's parking issues. Number five, the village's safety concerns should not be tied to the parking lot proposal. We can build a sidewalk, put the stop signs across lots without course trading with Astrobuck. Number six, the new proposed west side sidewalk will stop before the Greenberg residents, leaving pedestrians to either walk in the street in front of two houses, or cross the street in front of our house to the existing east side sidewalk. This does not solve pedestrian safety issues, it creates new ones. Number seven, we expect that existing viable alternatives will be explored. You stated that moving to DPW has been explored but did not happen, perhaps it's time to re-explore that option. Astrobuck should not look for, should also look for an alternative location on Astro Street or off-site with the shuttle service. No other options have been explored except the current proposal to rezone to a commercial district and forever destroy the quiet residential character of our neighborhood. Please read this record, leave this letter to the record. Thank you, David and Cheryl Brandywin. 85 South Buckout Street. Also related to Astrobuck, from Melanie Roberts and Andrew Bergman. Dear Mayor Smith and Village Trustees, we recently purchased a home on South Buckout Street. Few days after moving in, we were extremely disheartened to find out about Astrobuck's proposal to build a parking lot directly in front of our home. We attended the town meeting on Wednesday night, and were even further dismayed when we saw the actual plans. We moved to this street due to its quiet residential nature, and we feel the rezoning of residential space to accommodate a parking lot would be a regretful decision for a community with such a steadfast commitment to maintaining green space and quality of life that its residents are to act in your consciousness in matter imposed upon parking lot. Melanie Roberts and Andrew Bergman. Then from Daniel Greenberg. We resided 100 South Buck Gate Street for 20 years. Our home is located just south of the Astrobuck parcel, which is slated for development as a hillside parking lot. We wish to express our strongest disapproval for this proposal and the accompanying application of zoning change to the residential business industrially. We wish this letter to be read. We opposed the proposal because we purchased our home in 1996 with the belief and expectation that our block was residential and stayed that way. Our property value and quality of life would be materially harmed if the proposal accepted and the project implemented. Attended all the hearings regarding the application, since it was registered before by Astrobuck several years ago. In order to justify taking, as such, a taking of properties envisioned by the drop in our property values which would be caused by the rezone, applicant needs to present a compelling community interest. They have utterly failed to do so. The interests they have alleged that the parking lot enhanced safety and relieved parking overcrowding in the area simply not supported by the history of similar developments. Rather than enhancing safety and relieving parking overcrowding, parking areas tend to be the opposite, do the opposite. Increased traffic on an already dangerous segment of South Buckout Street will significantly harm the safety of pedestrians and motorists. The residential community of South Buckout will lose an important ecological quality of life resource in the form of greenbelt to serve as habitat variety of plant and animals. Just pretty much just to that. And from BK Ranganathan. I regret I could not attend Wednesday's meeting regarding the Astrobuck proposal. I have been a resident of South Buckout Street for more than three decades. I am appalled at the steady erosion of the residential character of the street due to the growing volume of commercial traffic in the Trent Building. There are lots of children and senior citizens living on the street, and the parking lot here of Irvington threatens the physical safety of these people. Lots owned by Astrobuck are residential lots, and I strongly oppose branding them any variants to convert residential space into industrial, commercial space. Regarding the parking use of Astrobuck commercial tenants, I appeal the village and Astrobuck to jointly explore developing the area currently occupied by the Department of Public Works. BK and Kayla Ranganathan. And Chris Wall wrote, I urge the village government to deny Astrobuck's properties application for a zoning change from residential to commercial. Please do not sacrifice the homeowner's neighborhood and quality of life because the business over expanded. It's not the homeowner's fault that the business didn't manage their growth correctly. Perhaps the Board could request alternatives. Please include this form of response. Chris Wall, 58 West Clinton Avenue. And then, switching gears a little, there is one letter from Allison Felix and Alan Felix about rock blasting behind Riverview Road. Dear Village Trustees, we are writing to add our voices to the complaint about the incredibly constant and loud rock blasting behind our home on the property up the hill behind the high school. Not only is the noise constant, loud, and all day, every day, but I don't know if any of you have seen the huge rock wall pile that is taking shape up there on the crest of the hill. If the wall isn't precise and stable, and for some reason should collapse, or partly collapse, it would be incredibly dangerous for anyone walking on the path below it. You're welcome to come see through my yard, you're welcome to come see through my yard and see what I'm talking about. Thanks for your attention to this noise lifestyle issue and possible danger from the rock wall pile. Allison and Alan Felix, 66 Riverview Road. And as you sent the trustees a video of the rock noise over the weekend.
Brian, in reference to that potential safety hazard, which, if it is a potential safety hazard, something should probably be addressed directly. Make sure that I take a look at it.
We will. Yeah, Larry, I'll follow up on that. Because that would obviously be addressed when not tipping on Saturdays. Is that ready?
We are.
Oh, we are. Look at that. Perfect. Oh, hello. Howdy behind Eric.
Susan Percy. Hello. Hello. So, I'm Susan Percy, from Alpina Babys, partner in charge of the audit, and my co-partner is Jeff Shaver, and manager is Melissa Zott, and we are here in August to audit the financial statements of the Village of Irvington. And for you is the approximately 100-page financial statement, which I will not be going through page by page this evening, but just give you an overview of the audit process and the results of the audit. As you know, the village has numerous funds, okay, so, and those funds are the General Fund, which is an operational fund of the village, and the Water Fund, and those are considered major funds. But then there are also other funds that the village has, which is the Public Library, the Sewer, the Cable TV, and the Special Purpose Fund. But this evening, I'm going to focus on the General Fund, because that's the operational fund. As you, with your own finances, you may have like your operational bank account, right, and then you might have other bank accounts for specific purposes, and that's basically how a municipality, how the village runs. So, the General Fund is the operational. A General Fund is always considered a major fund. The Water Fund is a major fund as well, but it doesn't, it does not make the other funds non-important. But we audited the whole entire village itself. In the 100-page document that you have, it's broken up into various sections, if you want to turn to it, and the first page there is called the Independent Auditor's Report, and that is the report that is issued, the only report that the firm owns, and is issued by the firm, and it's an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion any municipality can receive. And it discusses the audit that took place. It says that the financial statements are the financial statements of management, and the fact that what's part of the audit process, we plan the audit, what we do is we go in, we test the internal controls, and the reason why we test the internal controls of the village is to make sure that the internal controls that are told to us that exist by management, whether or not those internal controls are operational. Because as you know, you can have a list and say you have certain controls, but you might not be utilizing the controls. During that process of the testing internal controls, there's discussions with management, there's testing of the records. We do not look at every single transaction. We do a sample of the transactions. Say that if something occurred while we were testing those internal controls, if we felt that it was levels below management, we would go directly to management. If we felt it was leveled above management, we would go directly to the Board. However, there were no issues of fraud uncovered during this audit. In fact, there was just basically a separate letter that will be issued, which is housekeeping in nature, just on different areas where we felt controls could be strengthened, and management responds to that, okay? But that has been, that has been reviewed with management quite extensively. When we are here in August, we come with a team, and as I said, the team consists of two partners. Basically, that's the partner, I'm the engagement partner, I'm the engagement partner. Although the 100-page document is not prepared by management, they, we receive their trial balances and import that into, into the document, and then we also work on the financial statement notes with management. Part of my team is Jeff Shaver, who is the independent review partner for this engagement, and he reviews the financials after I have reviewed them. I have, Melissa Zott is a very diligent, highly experienced manager on the engagement, as long, as well as a supervisor, and we had a senior and a junior accountant. And in fact, we even had one intern this year to conduct the audit. But during that audit process, as I said, we audit not only the General Fund, the Water Fund, Public Library, Sewer, Cable TV, and Special Purpose Fund, but then we also look at the MDNA prepared by management and make sure that the MDNA, which is the Management's Discussion Analysis, which is the front part of this audit, audit piece, explains, it's an overview of the overall financial statements and the financial condition of the village, and we make sure that it coincides with that. What we're gonna do, I'm just gonna go through, just on a high level, what is included in here, and I told you that to do was the MDNA that was included in here, which is Management's Discussion and Analysis. And it's quite, yes.
Would you prefer questions at the end, or can I?
I could try, I could take them there.
How did you, how did you obtain the samples? How do you, is it, what's the process of that? When you talk about talking to management, who are we talking to?
So, what we do prior to entering, we have a planning meeting with Brenda, and where we have all the items that we're going to need. That takes place in March and April, prior to the year-end, right? Because your year-end is May 31st. Then what we do is, we do non-statistical sampling, but we do is, we request, we want to see what the populations are of the receipts of the dispersments. We want to see what the, the bank accounts, all the bank accounts for the village, okay? We also look, you have a note receivable, the documentation, you have a note receivable, which is that, what's the documentation, supporting documentation for that? The bank accounts are confirmed. We test receipts, we test dispersments, where then we randomly choose from the populations, go in, and then test the supporting documentation, and that's how that occurs. So, that, all of that is, that planning process is done ahead, way ahead of schedule, and then when we come in to do the work, that's when, then we do those tests. That work then is reviewed by the manager, then is reviewed by a partner, and then by another partner. So, because as part of looking at the financial statements, we're tying into those transactions. If at any point in time during this test we found there were issues, we would have to split that immediately. And then, the first part of the, the front part of this is called the NCY Financial Statements. So, a municipality is required to have what they call a modified accrual financials, which-
That's what you said. Sorry.
Say it as a getup.
That's what you said. No problem, sorry.
So, modified accruals, the near-term cash inflows and outflows, and that's what your budget is based upon, but the front part of the statements, that piece, is what they call full accruals, which includes your capital assets. As part of the process, we even had a discussion, although management updates the capital assets inventory of any additions and deletions to those assets, but even as part of the process, we had a conversation with your company in California that updates the, does the computer I see for that processing. So, as I say, it's a very robust audit process, okay? So, those front statements, which we're not going to cover tonight, are full accrual statements, which include your capital assets and your, and your bond debt, right? And included in your Management's Discussion Analysis is a very detailed, robust list of what we call construction in progress, which are those projects that are going on now that are not, not yet completed, okay? But the next statements are what they call the fund level statements. And as I said, those fund level is, are what the budget is based on, the fund level statements. And if you go to page, and I'll be very descriptive to the public, if you go to page 15 of the financial statements, on there you will see the various funds of, of the village, okay? Then, which is the general water, general with the operational fund, the water fund, which is self-explanatory, where the, the water revenues are, are recorded, and expenditures, capital projects, which the capital projects run through, the debt service fund, which the debt service fund runs through, and then the non-major ones, which I told you, was the library, the sewer, and the cable TV, and the Special Purpose Fund. And what do we mean by special purpose? That's where monies that they're given, given to the village are earmarked for a special purpose, that have to be spent for the special purpose. And as part of that audit process, any expenditures and, and, let's see, any monies that come out of that fund, we have, when we do our testing, we make sure that those expenditures were spent in accordance to the restrictions on that purpose. And if there are any receipts that came into that fund, what are those purposes, okay? Capital Projects Fund, any projects, we make sure, number one, the projects are approved, okay? What the expenditures were, that they related to those projects, and there's a very extensive project line schedule in the back of the financial statements, which on page 77 on, you can see the very extensive capital projects that the village is undergoing, and that schedule really summarizes what the, what's going on in the Capital Projects Fund, which are the expenditures and those revenues. And what do I mean by revenues? The revenues could be from transfers in, right? Or they're bond revenues that come in. And then there are, at the end on that project line schedule, shows where those projects stand, you know, whether they're fully funded, or if there's deficit fund balance, meaning expected revenues. And recently, a bond anticipation note was, was issued in November, and that bond anticipation note is described here in the financial statements as a subsequent event, and that was to fund certain projects. So, if there were deficits in the project, to fund those. So, I say, all work, all work is only up to the date that we have to issue those statements, and just in when we get, you know, I keep talking about the work, is so you understand the audit procedures that take place, and part of that is also obtaining legal confirmations, right, from any attorneys, to see if there are any contingency out there that needs to be recorded, and the legal confirmations are discussed with management, okay? As well as if bank confirmations came back with differing balances, that would be discussed with management as well, and be researched as to what the reason was, okay? So, so now we are gonna go to the General Fund.
Sorry, did you speak to the issue of who is management? I didn't catch if you had answered that question.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did ask that, it was the second part of my question.
Oh, who's management?
Yeah, when you decide-
That's the treasurer.
Other than, so this is primarily-
I wasn't sure of the phone. If necessary, I would prefer a treasurer.
Wait, I just wanted to clarify. This is primarily- Village manager, the treasurer, and then, then there is the department heads, the accounting team in the finance office, and then the Board of Trustees. Go to the Board of Trustees, what happens with the Board of Trustees, and then we'll go through the General Fund, which I'll show you, then we'll discuss the Board of Trustees. So, if you go to page 64, I don't mean not to turn around to the public, but usually then I'm scolded because I'm supposed to be discussing the Board, right? So, the balance sheet here is of the General Fund, okay? And that balance sheet is the Operational Fund, and the cash is 9.3 million at May 31, 2016. Then there are receivables here, which include, which includes county receivables, state and federal A receivables, and any advances that have been made to other funds. Liabilities are the accounts payable, what is due to the other funds that we had discussed, unearned revenue, any unearned revenues, and the amount that's due to the retirement system, the employee retirement system. Deferred inflows of resources, that, those are the deferred tax revenues, because there's a revenue recognition, if the revenue is not received within the 60 days, it has to be considered deferred for the tax revenues. This is, we'll get the robust balance sheet, and we have the net equity, right? But the net- But the net equity is of a fund balance of 5,32,000. However, that, that fund balance is broken up into various pieces, okay? It's a non-spendable piece, which basically is made up of those advances to other funds, which we will get to. And so that means, that means that that money needs to be collected from the other funds, and it's just putting a hole in place on the fund balance itself. Then unassigned, which is the free and clear fund balance, right? Meaning that that fund balance is to be used, you know, for rainy day, you know, for budget to use for future budgets, that's what that piece is, yes.
What's the difference between non-spendable, which is pretty self-defining, and assigned?
Okay. So that is, that's a very good question. If you go to the notes of the financial statement, I'm going to show you, and that will be on So non-spendable means that those monies will not be free and clear until collected. So prepaid expenses are very small amounts of that non-spendable balance of 2,736. Well, that's money that was, that was spent, put up ahead of time, prepaid, and that you're going to utilize. The 584 are those monies that are due from other funds, right? That's 584, when it's collected from other funds, it's be free and clear to spend, right? Part of your equity, right? Part of your equity. Your assigned mean, would be the encumbrances, right? Your assigned is assigned for a purpose, specific purpose, right? So your encumbrances are purchase orders issued in outstanding, which invoices have not been received. And this is the result of the government accounting standards board statement number 54, where they took the fund balance, and it was in buckets, broken into, I, to make it simplified for me, I consider them in buckets, and each bucket has a purpose, right? So each bucket has a purpose. And for the assigned, those are encumbrances, right? So which, each one is for a different purpose here, for general government support, public safety, transportation, cultural, and common community. As part of our audit procedures, we have to look at the detailed list of encumbrances that, that exist, and we sample those encumbrances, and we make sure that the supporting documentation behind those encumbrances as well, okay? Then the advances to other funds, right? That, that advances to other funds, obviously, we order the other funds, and we make sure that those monies are due to, right? Now, once collected, that advance is most likely, it's a receivable from other funds, but rather being in due to, due from other funds, you call it an advance, because it's more long-term nature, it's not going to be collected within the next two months, so. But the unassigned, yeah, so, and they also included in the advance, the sign, the sign, is an amount that was designated to be used in the subsequent year's budget, right? So these financial statements are as May 31, 2016, so obviously, we are in the new fiscal year already, and that, that 175, 550 is to be used in this year, this year's budget. What we've done here, when we broke up the buckets, we not only showed, showed the different funds and the buckets in each fund, but we also have a comparison of 2015 here, for you to discern, okay? And at the end of each column here are the fund balances for each fund, okay? And how, and how they're broken down into buckets. So then in back, we go back to the general fund. If you have questions, please ask. Now, I said on page 64 was the balance sheet of the village itself, and the net equity, right? So like in a commercial entity, would be like your equity, right? So this is your, your net equity fund balance is 5,32,000. Let's go back, go to the next page. So as we all know, there's the village, right? There's a budget, right? And the budget, there's an original budget, right? And then there's a final budget. And what's the difference between the original budget and the final budget? Well, if there are any modifications to that original budget throughout the year, there's a resolution made by the board to, to make that modification to that budget. Then the third column is actual, and is basically what actually happened. The next column is a variance, which in accordance with the government standards, the accounting standards that we follow, any differences between the final budget and the actual are in that variance column. So basically, in a summary format, I'm going to tell you how the village did for this, how, you know, financially, what they achieved during the fiscal year. So originally budgeted were, was 16.5 million of revenues, and there were some slight modifications of a final budget with 16.7 million. Actually, what, what happened was there was 17.4 million in actual revenues, which was a variance from that final budget of 745,000. How did we, how did the village attain a 74, 745,000 positive variance? Basically, it was made up of three items here, which were the non-property taxes, a positive variance of 63,000, when you're looking at the final budget of 1.1 million, it's the actual of 1.2. And that 63 was a non-property taxes, which was inclusive of sales tax and franchise, franchise fees. The detail of what comprises that, if you want to look at this in the future, is from pages 67 on, gives you all the detail that ties back into the revenue and expenditures. Then what was the other item that, where you achieved the 745,000? On page 65. Well, there were license and permits, there were permit fees of positive variance of 345,000. So budgeted was 235,000, and the actual was 581, giving a positive variance of 345. I don't know if Brenda wants to elaborate on what made up those, those permits.
Right. I gave the board an overview, the last meeting, the highlights. So, you know, we talked about the strong revenues that the village experienced the past year. Part of that really was the building permits.
And then, then the state aid was another piece of that 745, which was 208,000, which was basically, was 180,000 of positive variance in mortgage tax. So when you're looking at the final budget of 16.7, and then comparing to the actual of 17.4, obviously, when revenues are being budgeted, they have to be budget conservatively. Because remember, if you don't reach, just in your personal finances, if you don't attain your revenue targets, what happens? You have to either cut your expenditures, okay? Or you have to go into your equity, right? So here, the three items that achieve that, that positive variance, basically are ones that are not very easily, easy to budget, especially in this economy, okay? Which is the sales tax, the franchise fees, the permit fees, and, and the mortgage tax, which was strong, which was, which is a good, good sign.
And our movie permits.
Movie permits. I did see Washington DC, and I said, oh, I know them. No one from Washington knew everything, but I put you more on the map, right? So exactly, exactly. So expenditures. So let's look at the expenditures. So the original budget was 14.5, the final budget was 14.7, the actual is 14.3, with a positive variance of 439,000. Basically, how were the, was that positive variance obtained? It was a, positive variance was in the general government support of 163,000 savings, and employee benefits of 170,000. But remember, that 163 and the 170, that 439 is a very small percentage of that 14.7 million budget, right? So then-
About 2%?
Yes, exactly, very small percentage. So if you take the 745 savings, plus the 439, you get an overall savings of 1.1 million. Then add to it some smaller items, right? So if we go down the actual column, the revenues less the expenditures is 3.1 million. Then there were some small amounts of insurance recoveries of 120,000, and some transfers out. So what were the transfers out? So monies are transferred out to the other funds, right? But they were approved transfers out, capital projects fund, 492,000, the debt service fund, right, to pay the debt service, 1,592,000, public library fund of 781,000, and the cable TV fund of 6,000. Therefore, arriving in a net increase, a net change of 761,000, adding to the beginning fund balance of 4.2, to arrive at the 5,32,000, which if you go to that fund balance page, as I said, breaks, breaks that down. So therefore, if you look at what occurred for the village this year, well, the village conservatively budgeted their revenues, okay? And came up with a positive variance, you know, a modest positive variance of 745, savings in the expenditures, which were modest compared to the overall budget of 435,000. And due to the attaining that, okay, had to increase in the fund balance of 761,000. So the summer, to sum up the story, if you look at the net change in fund balance, which, go to page 65 and go three lines from the bottom. In the original budget, there was a planned use of 351,000 of the fund balance, okay? That was the combination of the encumbrances, right? And what was being planned in the previous budget to use of the fund balance. Then the final budget, there were modifications, which were approved by the board, of using 465,000. What happened due to the positive variances that we discussed, there was a positive variance of 761,000. Therefore, overall, the overall positive variance was 1,200,000. So therefore, bring the village with an ending fund balance of 5,32,000, okay? Those positive variances are not easy to achieve. As we all know, sales tax are in the process right now of reviewing the Westchester County's budget, which is quite exciting, right? But those positive areas regarding sales tax, mortgage tax, no, they could also go the other way. The village was fortunate that they went in a positive direction. And the, and the savings here, as you can see, that the, the village, as the board knows, right, management knows, you know, there was very tight budget there, because those variance really, really were not, you know, too high in percentage when compared to the overall budget to achieve. There are the other, if you go to the detail of the hundred-page document, there are notes there, and then the summary of the other funds. And as, as Brenda and Larry know, I obviously, I can come back at any time if you wanted to go through, do those. There is a separate letter, which was issued to management, which management is now preparing the response. And as I said, they were basically housekeeping in nature, the findings there. Obviously, in that letter also, we addressed the segregation of duties, and we understand, you know, the more involvement in one transaction, the stronger the internal controls. However, as part of the audit process, what we do look at, we understand that, you know, the village has a budget, and you're constricted on how many people can handle the transaction, how many people can be in the, in the, in one office, right? In order to be in line with this budget as well, we make sure that there are compensating controls in place. And then that's what you encounter in, in the management letter. There were different degrees of findings in the management letter, and if there was anything considered a material weakness or a significant deficiency, I would have addressed the board even in an earlier, earlier time, yeah, discussing with management. Also, as part of the process, there was a, an order of the justice court's receipts and dispersments, which also is another audit that, that management has received. And therefore, at the end, and at the end of the day, the village has a positive fund balance, and still dealing with the challenges of running a village with revenues in this economy and keeping in line.
Also to point out that part of that strong, unreserved fund balance was due to the fact that the water department did so well and decreased their deficit by about 40% from last year.
Yes, which is a very, very positive, I know that, that the fees had gone up for the water, but those fees, and also, I know that the part of the fund balance, the deficit in the water fund was reserved, okay? However, in a positive light, you can see that that deficit is coming down, which, which is very good. So therefore, it shows that, you know, those fees were really needed in order to eliminate that deficit.
We also had less water main breaks last year, which is big savings.
And also, right, I think also replacement of some of our ARBs, or maybe recompensed revenues.
Very good. As a former CPA and auditor, I never had to present my financial statements verbally, so you know, I guess I actually look forward to receiving, you know, a copy of the management letter to ensure that the internal control improvements are, you know, kind of, as you described, as housekeeping, I'm sure they are. Thank you for all your work. You know, I think, you know, if I had to sum it up in two lines, would be that we had a very strong year financially, and we'll continue to conservatively budget, but, you know, I think there's some of the numbers we'll probably look at this year, perhaps be a little less conservative on some of them that have, now, two or three years, maybe it's a trend, but not take all the numbers, say, in the, in the building department, but perhaps take, you know, look at extending those revenues a little bit. We'll have plenty of time to discuss next year's budget in the coming months.
Yes. And thank you for the hard work of management, the employees, and of the board, because it just does not come about, it takes a lot of work to get to this, to this, and to get to these figures, to attain these results. So, and, and I'm a Rivertown person, and it really is beautiful. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Susan.
And thank you.
Now, public comment.
So this is a draft because the dates are-
This was, had you presented?
Right.
After tonight, it can be a final copy.
Okay.
Especially reissued.
So those have assigned a pen here.
All right. And there's just some highlighted dates, I guess, as it makes this not complete, because the dates aren't-
It's dated once it's approved.
Yeah, right, okay, so we thought.
Because the board to the public.
Sorry.
No problem. The public comment at this point? Who else will move on to the consent agenda? Do you have any questions or comments about any of these? It seemed pretty straightforward this time. I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda, if I got a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Next up is the update on the traffic calming committee. We had you, had the committee in, I see Chairman Walter here now. He said he really wanted to come for the audit, really, because he's sick around a little bit this morning. You know, we had you guys in a few, few weeks ago. You asked if you'd come back in and, and present some more information, and some, I guess, some additional recommendations. In the couple of weeks since you were last in, I've met with Larry a few times, I've met with the chief, just to make sure that, you know, we kind of have, we're all on the same page. You know, I think one thing I changed since our meeting was I wanted to make sure I was fully involved in, you know, working with Walter and then pushing everything forward. And I think that, you know, from my meetings with the chief and Larry, I think we're very clear that we're going to be using our radar equipment around town to be collecting data to identify and, you know, quantify potential speeding issues. And then based on that data, we're going to tailor specific enforcement plans to address those issues. I think unfortunately, we only have, besides the fixed radar unit on Main Street, we only have one portable unit, and we typically have to leave each, leave it in place for, you know, two weeks or so, depending on the, on the weather and the, the holiday schedule. If it's a strange, if it's August, you basically can't do any readings because no one's around. But we have that, you know, constantly in the field. We had, obviously, in the past year or so, looked at places like Station Road, Harriman Road, Sunside, we moved it to kind of the areas we thought were probably the most, you know, interesting from a data collection perspective. Honestly, we're going to be going back to those places as well, because we want to see if some of the, the changes we made have worked, and we're still moving to other places around the village where we either have complaints, or we've kind of identified as, as potential issues. I think that so far, the anecdotes don't always support, where the data doesn't always support the anecdotes. I think sometimes things appear faster in some places than others. You know, sometimes it's a very limited time of the day where there's issues, sometimes there's not. But, you know, we're going to continue to collect data and analyze them as a board, as a committee, and as a, you know, as management, and as the police department. So that's going to be a key, you know, component, is getting that, that hard data. And obviously, that's just speeding, that isn't other things like stop signs and, you know, crossing W O lines and things. But it is a big, big piece of what we're focused on. Another important development is we actually have, in the last three weeks, we've actually hired two new police officers to replace two retired police officers. And I think, so that, that's kind of like, that got us back to where we were. But I think more excitingly for us is- But I think more excitingly for us is we identified another excellent candidate who we've met with the board, interviewed, liked a lot, and pending kind of the typical, the officer's going to be a transfer, so we have to go through all the paperwork and the background check, but we hope to have them by the end of the year or the very beginning of January. So that's kind of that, we, we'll actually be fully staffed for the first time since Detective Oso was injured, which is almost six years ago, I guess it was six years ago in April. So, you know, we've been running one person down in New York City or Yonkers or Westchester County, one officer down isn't that much, but when you have, you know, kind of 22 guys on patrol, you know, one is...
16.
16 on patrol. I forgot, I put you out there, chief.
I'm out there.
16 on patrol, you know, one additional is actually significantly, you know, is statistically significant, and it goes to, you know, allowing us to fill that one position that we've identified as important, which isn't going to be a particular officer, but it's going to be a role, which is going to be traffic enforcement, largely driven by the data that we're collecting that we discussed earlier. But, you know, I think that those, those hires are very important, you know, part of it, I think we found the two officers that you've already met here, I think, if any of you have the opportunity to meet them, I think you'd say, wow, you guys hired the two perfect officers. The third is right in that same wheelhouse. So we've been lucky with getting, you know, kind of very strong candidates. People want to work in Irvington, which is good. You know, that's, that's kind of the, kind of the update we have from, from our side of the table. And Walter, I'll, I'll let you go now.
Your honor, may I approach? Please.
Brian, while we're waiting for the gentleman or person, I just wanted to correct one fact or two thing. We actually have three capable radar units, one of which is fixed on Main Street. There's another sign that's a radar capture sign as well that reads out the display.
Is that being placed, right?
Well, that was on Harriman for a while, but it has not, it's not functioning at the moment, and we have that...
The portable one.
The smaller, black, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
So we appreciate this time to update you. There's not actually much of an update because you covered a lot of territory, which is terrific, and we're glad to hear about the progress. I would like to point out that there are people here from that committee, the traffic calming committee, who deserves some considerable recognition because they've been working for 16 months now, and I'm quite familiar with village committees. I think that this one has been extraordinary in terms of the time put in and the consistency with which they've labored at this through two summers and other months. So we have Mary Valdooley, Eric Holley, Alice Pecan, and Mark, and I hope I'm not forgetting somebody, but I think that we have five, a five-person committee and many neighborhood representatives who have helped us out in various, various important ways as we've tried to lead through this process. And I would just remind folks that the initial objective of the work, perhaps a very ambitious objective, is to change the culture of driving and pedestrian conduct in the village, which I think is a long-term process indeed, and perhaps an idealistic one, but I think achievable. And I've seen a community up close and personal frequently where I think they've established an ideal, more or less, driving culture. I'm sure you have the perfect one, that's Amherst, Massachusetts, which is about three, probably four times bigger than Irvington. And so I'd like to see us have some culture approximating that. There are other places too, I think, from what I've read, but that's one I've experienced personally often, many of them. I'd also like to thank Larry and Chief Serone for working with us over the last 16 months. Certainly, I've had many meetings with, with both of them, including during some hot summer months, and they've been, they've been cooperative, friendly, helped us out in many, many ways. And of course, the board has been supportive. I would like to say also, though, that we would like to see, frankly, even a more intensified effort, working with the chief and working with Larry and working with you all, and especially in the area of enforcement. You probably have in front of you a document that is a summary of our current recommendations, and some of these go back to the original recommendations we submitted a year ago, and others are more, a more frequent, a more recent origin, especially from the community input in October at the public hearing that you all had here. So we're hoping that you will take the time to review this set of recommendations, which I think the audience has. I would point out that probably you all have what would be the collector's item in regards to this document, because it has the wrong date on it for submission. It says, I think yours says 21...
06.
06, right.
I'll meet you back there.
I was hoping to stretch my lifespan. So just wishful thinking, I guess, but I have updated...
All these items won't still be on there, 2106.
I have updated, so there's a more current version here for those in my blind, and I'll have it back, back there in case you want to correct 2016 date. Nothing of substance changed in this particular document, however. I would say, by way of quick summary, that it deals with a number of different areas: enforcement, data, to which the mayor referred, coordinated database planning, we've called it, which involves a committee that I believe Eric is going to address briefly, an idea about a committee that we think would be helpful in terms of collecting data, analyzing data, and then developing a traffic management plan from that. The other category, another category is signage, and then something that I glibly call humps, bumps, and bolts, just to lump together various physical things. And then the education kinds of initiatives. Like, again, I stress that the, probably the main focus here is enforcement, and I'm glad to hear about the hirings. I know the hirings have been, been an issue, and we're hoping rather fervently that indeed the hirings will allow us to put much more emphasis on enforcement, which we think is key. Actually, part of our objective in establishing a better culture is to get rid of all these signs. They're beautiful, and Mark does amazing art, and comes up with great taglines. But the ideal would be to have a village that's really, which you don't need so many signs to remind people of the education program. But we're not there yet, and so we're going to keep, keep up the education program in various ways. The other thing I'd like to mention is we would like to come back, if you would indulge us, before Christmas, and have a work session around these recommendations, albeit a brief work session, so that we can review them, see where we stand. The mayor provided some update, but I think there are more elements of this plan than what he was able to cover in his brief summary. So that's what I have for now, by way of our recommendations, and anybody who's on the committee, of course, is free to chime in. I know Eric wishes to do so. Anyway, thank you for the, for the time. And if you want an updated non-collectors item version of this, why, just come and get it.
I'll take one.
Oh, okay.
Actually, I'd rather have the file. Can you email me the file? The updated one?
Well, sure.
I just wanted to emphasize that what's in this list of priorities has been developed over time with input from various sources, but also includes, you know, other comments and requests and suggestions from the community, including the work session we had last month. So that's all kind of wrapped in, and then, you know, sort of the top level has been skimmed out, the most important, low-line fruit and other things to form this secondary, this updated priority list. This is, there's still another deeper list behind this, you know, that there's always something to go back to the will for. I guess that's my point, so.
So I am Eric Holley, I'm also on the traffic calming committee. Thank you, Walter, for your wonderful presentation. So I briefly mentioned this at our work session because I just finished it and I did not have it printed out, so I wanted to print out, basically, it's just a brief overview of the audit that we did, a much smaller audit, but it's an audit of the ticketing that our police department did last, basically, like 31, 31 months. So I put it on these papers so you guys can see what I was speaking to at the work session, and then when I speak, you did a little bit more today. Basically, there's also that, there's very little to note ticketing on any street for speed infractions, except on Broadway, and basically, most of that is on South Broadway. And what my analysis of this data audit is basically that there's a serious speeding problems on many of our streets in Irvington, and I will point again to that speed, the average speed on Harriman Road, which was measured at 90, 93% of people who drove westbound on Harriman Road in the one week period that we did, the speed reading, sped over the speed limit, 76% sped over the speed limit, plus five miles per hour, that is considered enforceable amount. 76% is an incredibly high number, and these, these numbers were recorded by the village in November 2014. Basically, the 543 speeding tickets issued in Irvington in that 31-month period between January 2014 and August of 2016, only five of the tickets were not on Broadway. And as I said before, this was very disappointing for us, because of the work we've been doing and the, and how important we have learned from the community, how important they think the enforcement issue is. And another indication is that our committee recommended that we purchase two new speed radar signs, which were installed in the village, and we still have not received any data from them whatsoever. The radar signs were installed in March of 2016, it is November of 2016. So that is very disappointing to us, and I know that, Brian, you spoke to this when you made your statements at the beginning of this pardon meeting, and I appreciate that greatly, but we've been asking for speed data for a really long time, our committee has, and we have not gotten any of it in 17 months. We've not received any data, no data in the last 17 months. And we've come to the conclusion that the village is simply not set up to properly apply data-driven street enforcement protocol. The speed readings need to be gathered regularly by the village and tracked by the Irvington Police Department. If speeding problems are detected, the IPD needs to initiate a speed calming response. The new speed readings can be requested to gauge the effectiveness of this response. When this transparent traffic enforcement system is in place, it can also be used to respond to anecdotal complaints like stop sign running or any other complaints that the village residents have that are properly vetted by the IPD. In other words, we need a plan, we need an overall plan to deal with traffic enforcement, where we enforce, what we enforce, and when we enforce it. And this is what we've heard from the residents, literally for the last year and a half, I've been hearing that for longer, to a person almost, they've been complaining about lack of enforcement in Irvington. And so I go into this, the basic traffic enforcement plan that was adapted from the Greenberg Police Department, I had the pleasure of hearing it talked by the captain of, the captain of the Greenberg Police Department Traffic Enforcement Division, and it's just a very, very simple plan to establish protocol for how to deal with traffic enforcement issues. And I also want to point out that it's also disappointing, our committee's to look at Main Street. I mean, I go on Main Street every day, I go by lunch, I bring my kids there, and I see that the board trustees has changed the speed limit on Main Street, which is a wonderful one, like 15 mile per hour, and I see no, I see one new 15 mile per hour sign, I see signs that are still not marked correctly, they're marked that they're only 15 mile per hour in, during school hours, which is not true anymore, it's a modest per hour along the whole stretch of Main Street. And we'd really like to see a much more reactive village government to any of these requests, because I think it's really important to the safety of the people in the village. And I think we need to be able to put ourselves in a position where we're ahead of the problems. Right now, we're dealing with problems as they occur. I think that we can deal with traffic problems in Irvington from a much more macro point of view. We can, we can track these problems, we can look ahead and see that we're going to have the same problems. We can, if we have a speeding problem on a certain street in Irvington, we can address that problem, we can lower and manage the speeds on that street, but we're going to have to come back to that problem again. It's very difficult every now and then to do that, and we can actually manage speeds that way really, really well. We can also look at the whole traffic overview of the village. How do we want cars coming into the village, the feeder streets from the Sawmill, Harriman Road, how people come to Main Street from Harriman Road? Do they come off Harriman Road onto Sycamore Lane? We want to basically keep them on Harriman Road, we do not want them cutting through different residential areas. So we, we can actually decide where the traffic enters Irvington, from what streets it enters Irvington, from what streets it goes to the village, from what streets it goes to the train station, and we can have traffic go to the appropriate areas, but we can actually manage the speeds of those roads, and we can try to keep them off of the actual residential streets that are not made for traffic. And we can do that with many different devices, like traffic bumps or stop signs or whatever else we want to do, but I really think we really need to get ahead of the problems that we have in Irvington, and right now, we're just trying to catch up, and we're really not dealing with problems fast enough, I think, we tend to. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for the, thank you for the recommendations. We, as a board, I know we all take it very seriously, we will have follow-up meetings I assume are scheduled by the committee. I will meet personally with the chief and with Larry to review the data, review the lack of data, find out, I mean, I've had kind of two disappointing disappointments in the last two years, probably since we've been looking at this, probably since June of 2014, really, which is, one, the kind of slow speed that we're able to do a lot of the, because we've talked about this with the chief and with Larry going to bed, the slow speed at which we've been able to do a lot of the physical improvements. The most obvious one is the Heritage Hill crosswalks that have taken, and we probably had a plan for that in, probably, that accident happened in June. By September, we had a solid plan, we went to our engineers, got that, went to the state, they came, you know, that's been going back and forth. Now, we, you know, we give it the go-ahead without grant money or anything, we still can't get it done, dealing with the state and dealing with our engineers and a lot of other issues. That's been very, that's, that's one example. We have done a lot of striping and things like that throughout the village, that was usually the issue, and some signage, but, you know, I think that's, that's probably the most worrying. Second, I think, is the kind of unreliability so far of a lot of the radar units. I know the one on Main Street took a while to get set up, and then we changed the speed, and we couldn't get the speed to work. I think the second one on Harriman isn't working. The portable one is working, but again, that's, you know, you're moving that around, so it's like, you know, you're kind of, that's, that's, we have a, we don't have a plan on, you know, what we want to go to for that as well. But that's been kind of, not having the solid data has been frustrating for me as well, so I share that frustration. I do, I think I've said a couple times, 2017 is where we're going to finally see a lot of the, you know, in the, on the ground or in the grounds kind of improvements, including the, you know, the crossing by, you know, the, the war monuments and the aqueduct, that's going to be a big one. The bowl bouts, we're going to finally have some of those on Main Street. You know, so a lot of the stuff that we've been planning is going to all kind of come to fruition soon, you know, so I think that will be exciting, and it ranges to see, do bowl bouts help? Intuition says they do, but it's going to be interesting to see if they do or not. I do think that the aqueduct crossing, which has had, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars of engineering work, should really make that whole area safer, and I think that that's one of the most dangerous, because people come on the aqueduct, all of a sudden in a parking lot, and then they come out to a wide giant opening on Main Street, don't know where to cross, there's a crosswalk, but it's not near the aqueduct. You know, so I think that that's, that's really a key one for me. The top of Main Street, which we talked about, you know, lighting and things like that, that plan, which we thought would be relatively easy, has been a lot more complicated, a lot more expensive. We now have, you know, found funding for that, so that's, you know, being engineered. So I think there's a lot of the kind of hard stuff to do that's going to happen, and I think that a lot of the, a lot of the recommendations in here are, are things we can do relatively quickly, so I think we're going to, you know, we plan to meet and discuss the recommendations, we just got them. So, you know, we'll go over those and we'll talk to Walter and the rest of the committee and come up with a plan, so.
Sorry, I left one thing out, I wanted to speak to, Walter had spoken to the fact that we reform a core committee that deals with the coordination of the traffic data and the enforcement plan, and I think that's incredibly crucial to have that oversight, because I think without that oversight, we can't really guarantee that anything's going to work properly and that be done. So the idea of having a committee with, with Larry, a representative of the police department, with the mayor, possibly a board, a board trustee member, and a member of the traffic calming initiative is really, really important to our committee, because... Do you have a thought, again, of what it could be? Be nice to be able to improve and actually...
And I think, I think, you know, the first meeting can be, kind of come up with a standardized kind of report that'll be easy to use for not only that committee, but for the public to see it. And I think it's also, we've talked about it too, where if you say, gee, everyone's always speeding on, you know, pick a street, Sycamore Lane, you can see that it's been studied, even if you find, even if it turns out that we say, you know what, no one's speeding on Sycamore Lane, or everyone is, you can see it, and you can know that it's been tracked, it's been identified, and, you know, something's going on about your complaint, it's not just kind of, you know, you know, you raised your hand at a meeting or you sent an email, and then who knows what happens. I think it's going to be an easy way to have on the website, kind of, you know, to have real data makes things better, you know, you can't argue with data as much anyway. You know, so I think that that is a key.
I agree.
So Brian, one thing I wanted to say as well is, one of my concerns about the signs, sorry, sorry to harp on the signs, but, you know, it was a reasonable expenditure money, they're not cheap, but they weren't, they weren't insanely expensive, just on the edge. But, you know, like any kind of electronic device, if there is a, some kind of a problem with getting, keeping them working reliably, and I don't know what the problem is, but, you know, I really haven't talked to Larry or heard back from Walter about this, but, you know, if there's an electronics problem, manufacturing problem, we should get back to them. to the manufacturer and say, you know, hey, these signs are not functioning correctly. I know at one point, you know, it may be as simple as, but I don't think it is, as simple as replacing batteries more frequently on the ones like on Harriman, but I think it's, if there is something about, with the provider, with the manufacturer, we may actually be out of warranty by now, but we really should have, we really should try to push them as much as possible, because this is signs that are being used, same signs manufacturers being used around Greenberg by other communities, including Greenberg, the town, so we probably have some sort of leverage there, you know, as, as a group of communities trying to look at using similar equipment and, you know, gathering similar expertise in the use of it, so.
It might also be worthwhile to look at outsourcing maintenance of those signs, too. I mean, I don't know how other municipalities deal with that and what kind of expense that would be, but it could take some burden off of the core management team of the village if it's not too expensive, and then they could potentially even just deliver you, you know, data reports, it's.
Yeah, we could definitely do that. Anyone else on the board? You know, I do think, you know, Walter said it, but, you know, this has been a very, very, very dedicated group, you know, I started off the meeting with talking about how many great volunteer groups we have. You know, I think that there's, you know, it is a life and death type of committee, potentially at least, you know, so I think that it, it has, we, I just want to say, we recognize your seriousness and the amount of time that you've spent on this, you know, Larry and the chief and I all talked about that today, we appreciate that, you know, I think that getting solid recommendations like this is very helpful for us, we can now use these and, you know, you know, figure out how they fit into the overall scope, you know, and I think that, you know, I think that the data is going to be, going to be the biggest issue, because that's going to be a drive a lot of this, and I think it makes it frankly easier on the chief and things to have the data, so it's not, you know, his best guess, or, you know, whoever calls the most to eighty-eighty, that was where we patrol, but we'll actually have, have the details, and, you know, maybe we have to find, you know, get a second, you know, portable one or something like that, that are going to come up. I think we frankly underestimated some of the time, because we didn't realize that you can't necessarily put it there for two weeks, because if you have snow and no one's driving, or it turns out that it's a long weekend, it's a holiday weekend, and no one's around, so you don't get enough data, you know, and I think that we also frankly underestimated the amount of data we need, you know, there's so many places that we want to, you know, things as simple as, what were the effective speed bumps in Archie Park? We don't have enough data that goes down every street yet, because we were moving it to Harriman Road, and, you know, so it's, you know, I think that it's, but it all has to be done, and I think, yeah, writing some of it down and getting a solid plan on the approach makes things easier, because it's not haphazard, you're not responding to.
Some areas need engineering to look after.
Sure, sure, and, you know, I think we, one thing we've said as a board, too, is we're willing to spend the money on engineering and studies and equipment to address this, because it is a serious issue. You know, it's not, it's not an issue that's unique to Irvington, I think it's everywhere, but I think we had kind of, you know, those three-month period, and thank God they were all okay, but I think it created an urgency that thankfully, thankfully, this, this committee has not allowed that urgency to go away, just because time has passed.
Oh, speaking of pedestrian accidents, I've requested for the last six months for pedestrian accident reports from the village that I have not received, so I was hoping to get those.
Good, Walter, whatever Walter, that's what Walter got.
That was just a list of, I don't even know what it was, because it didn't even have a title on it, it was possibly of all the accidents that happened in Irvington the last two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, we were about to see pedestrian report accidents, the actual police reports.
There's only three, and those are probably tied up in legal cases as a result of.
Well, we are, we are looking, we are determining pedestrian safety issues and signage for the whole village of Irvington, but we have no access to the pedestrian accident reports. Not only adequately from what I've seen or heard, but we have no access to any reports about where they, where they actually occurred, all pedestrian accidents in Irvington in the last three, four months.
Okay.
Solid thread.
Thanks.
So, you know, I agree, I'm going to say exactly what Brian says in terms of how seriously we all take this, and we all live here, too, we know this is a serious problem. One thing I was wondering about the recommendations and the analysis here is, and this was discussed a lot, Mark, when we talked about the education program and who needed to be educated, and we talked about people who work here, come through Main Street or Station Road, work probably at, at Bridge Street, people that live here, go to school, that drive to the train, arrive as human beings do, that is, that's as another group, and of course, there are visitors and people that come. So, in determining how we saw the change, the behavior question, which is the first issue that Walter brought up and has always been part of this discussion, it seems to me we need to know a little bit about who's, who's doing what. Are the people going to work at Bridge Street, the primary speeders? Are the people who live here and taking kids to schools, the distracted drivers more than others? So if we're going to aim our education correctly, we need to know who's doing what. So, I don't know if that's a different data gathering, I don't know if that's impossible, but, you know, I'm thinking we want to aim the right message to the right people.
Can I just speak to that? We've talked about this many times in the past, and I've been here for twenty-five years or something, and there's been an enormous increase, you know, not in population, but in new families that come in with small children, Bridge Street is fully occupied, the Tred Building is fully occupied, there's a lot of business going on, and it, to me, I think you're absolutely right, it's about changing behavior, and one of the most simple ways to do that, we can collect data and try to determine who the scofflaws are, and I think that's a valid point to make, but I think that if we, if we look at our village as a village that has gateways, then we really need to focus in on people who are entering and leaving our village on a daily basis. It doesn't matter whether or not really they're soccer moms, or they're people working at Bridge Street, it's all those people involved that are speeding on our road, that need to change their behavior. You can't, in my opinion, underestimate the importance of targeting gateways in the village and making those really specific points where we are flagging people and saying, you're now entering a zone where certain behavior is expected of you. So, it can be really anybody who's coming in and out, so, you know, we have talked about this a lot on our committee, and I think it's a very important point that shouldn't be lost, and I think that that coupled with enforcement, at least in the short term, I think it's really clear that, you know, hitting somebody in their pocket and stopping them, I mean, being intimidated by a police officer who's saying, listen, you're, you're not obeying law here, has tremendous impact. So I think in the short term, that's like a, one simple way to say, this is, the first step is enforcement, targeting the gateways. Day, when people in business are going in and out of the village, targeting school hours would be.
I don't disagree with that, I've heard you speak about that before, I think that's critical.
And I think we all have to kind of acknowledge that it's a quality of life issue as much as it is to save kids.
Sure, here, and that's part of the, the aqueduct crossing, is to make a visual statement.
Yeah.
You're now in this little historic town, but, but my point about the education and the, the use of data is, if you were going to go to the PTA or the school board or, you know, those groups and say, hey, here's this data about distracted drivings, these are people who are residents here, who are, and they're concerned about the safety of their kids, and we want you to bring them the message along with us, that distracted driving percentage is X number of local people, I think it, it could be like a, oh my gosh, it's us, we're part of this problem, we let ourselves do this, and how can we talk about that and make that change? And similarly, the people who work here, there has to be a different message or a different way of reaching the people who work here to say, hey, we've, we've just taken a, you know, an analysis to say, the people coming down Station Road between this time and this time, there are X number of kids who live here, let's discuss how we can change this behavior, yes, we're going to get a ticket, but you know what, we want you to be part of our community, we want you to change what you do, and we need the most effective method, we need a sociologist, psychologist, somebody who says, this is the way you would target this message to this problem for these people, and, and think, your committee can probably come up with a lot of it, but, anyway, so that, that was my point about the use of the data differently.
You know, I'm a bit hot water here, but sometimes things happen in neighborhoods that really are inexplicable, I mean, we heard during the October work session about problems on, what was it, Meadow Lane, Meadow Way? Off of Harriman, yeah. About speeding and, and, and danger to kids on Meadow Way, that's a cul-de-sac, it's got like seven houses on it. Now, really, folks, I mean, to my mind, talk to your neighbors, right? I mean, what, I don't get it, because I might be missing some, that's why I said I might be getting a hot water here, because.
We saw something similar with Field Point, when we had, you know, a lot of people blowing through stop signs and speeding, and, you know, we went up and we had a police officer there, and, you know, I'd say every single person that we stopped was a resident of Field Point, you know, so it's, I mean, that's, I think that was kind of, it opened my eyes and said, this isn't only about enforcement, which is a piece of it, it's an important piece, but so much of it is our behavior, and honestly, like, you know, the, I think it's mine's slowed down a region, you know, released road range out the back of mine, but every time I start my car, I think I have a sticker on the back that identifies me to someone that has said, I'll slow down, and that's the thing that's actually changed my behavior more than anything else. And if I'm a little late for the train, or I'm a little late for a meeting somewhere, I end up being a little late and I take the next train, and a lot of it is that little sticker at the back, it's marked "hot" design on it, but it's, that's what we need, more people.
You feel guilty, huh?
Yeah, and, and, sometimes I slow people down, because I'm going, you know, twenty on, you know, on, on Riverview, and there's someone that's, I can tell they almost want to pass me on Riverview Road, and, you know, we need, you know, and I think that that's what the great idea about the pace car was, we had so many people agree to be that pace car, you know, and, and that's really going to, you know, you lead by example one, but you also frankly get a little bit in the way, you know, so it's.
I mean, that's obviously true, and we've been doing that for the last year and a half, but there are always people who are not going to listen to any, and with, for that reason, we need enforcement, and we've been saying that for a year and a half, so, I mean, I agree with you, I agree with all the sentiments, but there are people who simply don't care, and that, that's the population that we need to reach right now when we're a year and a half into our program.
So I just wanted to, one other thing that I thought was kind of interesting, and you wanted to talk?
I would comment, if I can, on a couple of things that just passed.
Let me just say one thing, and then I'll shut up. Walter talked about Amherst and the driving culture there, I don't, I've only been to Amherst a little bit recently, but I often go through Northampton, which is nearby, and, you know, within, just certainly in that quadrant of schools, I got to tell you, you know, they have like a four or six lane main drag, anyone steps one foot into that crosswalk anywhere up and down that main drag, I forget which road, the street number, road number, side stops immediately, it's not like.
Because they have enforced it.
It's just the most astonishing thing.
A lot of it is just the timing, too, it's not all enforcement, because the other thing you have to start enforcing is pedestrians, and, you know, if people are walking in the middle of the street, or people just walk out, I mean, that's where we're going to have to also start writing a lot of jaywalking tickets, which, you know, it, it does change the character of the town, when, you know, one of the things I always hear people complain about California is they get jaywalking tickets, and, you know, it, I don't know, it's, it's a fine line, and I think that's what's very difficult for the police department, especially with the jaywalking and the crosswalks, is that that's the balance you have to strike. Every time someone steps into the road and they're this far out, you know, you don't want to get a hundred dollar fine, does it going to change behavior? Probably, but it might not, it might just make things, you know, it makes the, the police department then like this, you know, overlord of Main Street. I mean, we, we might be too far the other way, but, you know, it's.
Well, we're not anywhere, I mean, I, my problem is, sorry, I get really upset, because the problem is the cars are not paying attention to the legal crossing points. Every time I come, just about every night I come to a meeting here, I practically get run over, maybe not every, but probably at least fifty percent of the time, I come trying to cross the crosswalk right in front of Village Hall, there are cars that don't care that I'm in the middle of the crosswalk, they speed up from down the hill so they can get in front of me before I'm in their lane. So, we have some real problems, it's not, I don't want to just blame it on kids or adults jaywalking to Jordains, you know, because everyone does that, but, but, you know, we need some basic crosswalk enforcement.
But I think we also need to start moving, I mean, I hate to say we're going to get rid of some parking, but I think that some, some of the, some of the problem with the crosswalks, and I find what's happening to myself, is I'm driving twenty miles an hour up, which is much easier to stop, and I pull up, and there's a car parked, you know, maybe a big SUV, maybe not, and all of a sudden, someone's in the middle of the road, and I, a couple times, I've actually slammed on my brace and stopped, like, almost, almost in the crosswalk, so, that's something I think, you know, again, I know parking's the holy grail on Main Street, but, you know, it might cost us to eat spots or something to make things a heck of a lot safer.
To get the corner visibility.
Absolutely.
Which is all, was talked about extensively in the Main Street, Street Skate Plan.
Something like those with the bowl bouts, because you need more.
Okay, so now we have this gentleman that'd like to speak, sorry.
My name's John Berman, I just moved here about two years ago. I don't know Eric, and I don't know Walter, but I knew this was on your agenda tonight, which is why I came down here. I can tell you from my, what you said about Meadow Way and a couple of other spots, I live on Hudson Road East, it's only two blocks long, it's not the residence, it's passed through traffic, which is seeking to avoid the corner of, initially the corner of Ashford and Broadway to skip, to come north on Washington Avenue, so as not to come through the main downtown area, and then they're driven one block further north to Hudson Road East because of the speed bumps and the red light at the corner of Langdon and Broadway. All for the speed bumps on Langdon, I don't, I don't live there, but I think they contribute to the safety on that block, which is a major feeder to Mercy College. I think that the traffic, which is not residence, as I said, driven to Hudson Road East, is not because of the speed bumps, it's because of the combination of the red light and the speed bumps. Everybody would rather drive one block further to avoid two blocks. So Eric sort of commented that we need to control the flow of traffic, and I couldn't agree with that more. Right now, inadvertently, as the, the mayor kind of said, you get unattended consequences, we have an enormous volume of traffic being driven through a two-block stretch, all to avoid red lights and speed bumps. It's not Mercy College traffic, because I play in the front of the house with my kids, and I know where they're going, because they're all proceeding on Hudson Road East, heading west, and they're making a right on Broadway to continue north towards downtown Irvington or Tarrytown, whatever it is, so it's got nothing to do with Mercy College, and it's all driven by those speed bumps and the red light. I'm not saying take them out, no, but there has to be a better solution. The statistics that I saw are that on this tiny two-block stretch, twenty percent of the people are coming through speeding, and it changes the character of tiny two-block, it's not a long street like you, some of the others, it's not a main drag, it's two tiny blocks, and I have yet to see one of the persons come through, signal a right turn when they continue onto Broadway heading north, because it's, it's just a quick kill shortcut. I can understand their decision-making, but I came to support the work of the committee and to point out that sometimes the anecdotal evidence does match the data, and it's not always the residence, in this case, I know for a fact it's none of the residents, I would also add, in the three houses between Erie and Broadway, there are seven small children, on one tiny block, which is only three houses, actually, it's eight, if you include the house on the corner of Broadway, no, it's a word, eight small children in four houses, which is the whole block, so I have no brilliant solutions, nor do I have complaints, and I just want to support the entire thrust of all matter and point out that there really are problem areas, and it, you know, some, you know, some of it is traffic engineering, kind of what Eric said, you got to funnel it to where you want it to go. Do I want to see more traffic on Langdon? I'm sympathetic to people on Langdon, not really, they already, I know they already have backups in the morning when the, when the traffic funnels into Mercy College, you know, that's not a great thing. Where should it go? I don't know, maybe there should be, you know, I see some references, maybe there should be a sign, no through traffic, or funnel it back to Broad, I, I don't have an answer, but it, so, and. Or funnel it back to Broad, I don't have an answer, but it so, and perhaps contrary, counterintuitively, you'd think it's a lot of Monday to Friday traffic feeding the train station, and there is some of that. But you would be shocked to see the pass-through traffic between one and five on a Saturday afternoon. It's like, where are all these people coming and going on Saturday afternoon? Not to the train station. Fine, there's a lot of people, it is what it is. But again, it's counterintuitive, but there's a real problem. I don't have a solution, I appreciate everybody's efforts.
Thank you.
The committee needs more anecdotal... I'm happy to volunteer about it anytime.
You want to join a committee?
I would supplement the committee.
Yes. Sign that man up.
Please do, guess up yours.
So, I mean, I guess we can take public comment. So, if we can try not to repeat ourselves, how about that? You can go first.
Sure. My name is Nicholas Moore, and you might just come up to the mic, it's just easier for everyone to... Go on. I'll keep you here.
Hi, my name is Nicholas Moore, and I'm at Nine Hancock with my family. I also thought I'd come here and support the, the overall committee's effort, I think that's fantastic. I'm the president of Ardsley Park Property Owners Association. We want, one of the things that we heard extensively in our recent annual meeting was the concern about some of the vehicle conflicts associated with pedestrians in and around, you know, as, as we go ahead and more and more people access the station and don't necessarily have parking spots down there, and we also want to go ahead and encourage people going ahead and accessing the station through, through walking, as well as Mercy College that's coming to and from the, the station on their way to the campus. There certainly is a great potential for some serious accidents in and around that area. We do see speeding, that was brought up repeatedly at, at the annual meeting, and we are just, we're hoping that we, we can go ahead and safely add Hudson and Ardsley West to the overall efforts that you folks are looking at, and we want to come back at another time when we're as appropriate and talk about some of the initiatives and just learn what the village and how the village is doing on, on the pathway. We wanted to go ahead and look into, and that is, if there's not any ability to go ahead and add sidewalks, because those are expensive, would there be a possibility of going ahead and shifting the cartways in order to go ahead and perhaps stripe out an area, to go ahead and encourage even more pedestrians to go ahead and use that area in a safe way? So, thanks to the committee and thanks for the Board of Trustees for going ahead and taking this, this difficult issue on.
Thank you.
Howie's staring at the free quarry lane. I support the committee to the nth degree for my first time here. I wonder, has there ever been any talk of combination units, cameras and radars? I personally was nabbed on Eastern Parkway in Brooklyn, and it's, it became like muscle memory, and obviously...
The problem with those is New York State law, you can only have cameras in cities. It's a strange, it's a strange rule, like, so if we wanted to have a red light camera or something, we're not allowed legally.
Also about speeding.
And we can't have any...
If it's not manned by law enforcement?
Exactly right. For whatever reason, villages and towns are out of luck. I can't explain it, I don't even have a theory.
I'll be permitted.
Actually, the state was...
I heard, I remember, last time I looked into it, it was, you could only have it in cities. Because I looked in, this is, this is 18 months ago, I probably looked into it.
But there's difference between red light cameras and, you're referring to a radar camera, which I hadn't heard of. Very effective.
I can look into it. Last time I looked, there was no, there was, because actually I talked to Paul Finer, because I figured he'd be my advocate to doing this, and he said he, his town attorney in our village had looked into it and you weren't allowed. He actually had brought it up to Tom Ebonati, so that doesn't seem fair, especially when Greenberg is bigger than a lot of cities in the state of New York.
I'm not allowed to follow that.
You're talking about just a camera that gives you your current speed that you're going, and you're speeding and that all, quite, just plain and force...
You get a ticket with them.
You're a pessimist everywhere, it's insane.
I got caught on the red light camera in Brooklyn.
Yeah.
And all you say is very effective, muscle memory.
It was a school zone, a school zone they can have. No.
The city...
In the city, in a school zone.
Not just school zones, they're all...
Yeah, this was in, exactly.
Speeding? You saw it was speeding on a red light?
No, okay, I got nabbed on a red light, but we're talking about speeding.
Well, I'll double check on it.
We'll double check on, yeah, I mean, we, I'd love to have...
Can't tell you how effective it is.
Cameras and all, and it's so much...
Doesn't hit somebody's personal points, but it hits the, the ticket gets mailed to the residence and...
And, and another thing, Waze actually tells you they're coming up, which is interesting. So it starts to change...
Exactly, people have it in their mind, and again, it becomes muscle memory, and if it's nine out of 10 tires in the village, it could be this right people, like that gentleman said.
Sometimes it's not.
10%, 20% it's not.
But I think the second time you got one in the valley, it's not.
Yeah, exactly.
If you lived here, yeah. I mean, that's, it's, to me, the thing, the way you supplement the 16 guys on the road is with technology.
Oh, exactly.
And we unfortunately, every time we've looked at those particular things, we haven't been able to, but we'll check into it again, see if it's changed. Because if that has added more to the city, why can't we get anything?
Yeah, I think it goes by population usually.
Yeah.
I spoke to Tom Ebonati's office...
Thank you.
About it, and...
Who's the legislator who went from prison to the state?
Anyway, it was in his...
Come on, that must have been what you had a little...
It was in his, it was on his agenda, so it sort of came to a halt, but it's, it's apparently, it, it was attempted in Nassau County a couple of years ago, and it turned out that the Nassau County, wherever this was, had allowed for revenue based on potential...
They budgeted it, right?
Oh, my God.
So that's kind of a bit of compassion.
As a point of information, I think, because I did look at it a while, about a year ago, and I think that the history of it is that it's outlawed all over the state, ostensibly for privacy reasons, and I believe that New York City and Yonkers filed for exceptions. So I don't think it's specifically the size of the city, I could be wrong, but as I look at it, and I, and I think the issue is can we...
I think it's the same thing that Nassau County did. Yonkers does have one on Central Avenue.
Yeah, Yonkers in the city does.
Yeah, the larger cities, I believe, filed for exemptions and got them from the state legislature. So I think that would be our route, is to say we want to set up a case study.
Yeah, we could start, we could start with the Village Officials Committee, because we, we meet all the, all the villages in Greenberg, the five villages, and then Sleepy Hollow and Greenberg proper all meet monthly, so that's something we could bring up as a, that's a big, that's a pretty big population.
Work together.
So, yeah, I would say we would try to do that as Greenberg. All of Greenberg, unincorporated and villages and...
Marianne will look into it, otherwise we'll have to start our lobbying efforts, you know, how quickly New York moves.
We can change state laws, we've done it before.
You already came all the way across, so I didn't give that.
Hello, everyone. My name is Heidi Rose, I live on Sycamore Lane. Thank you to the committee for these great recommendations. Just as I was looking through it, I wanted to see if I could advocate for a no-through traffic sign on Sycamore, not just a no-commercial traffic sign. And the reason for that is that we have 34 children under the age of 12 between Sycamore and Godwood Lane. It's only 50 houses, but there's lots of new families, and we don't get blessing, so all of our children walk, either will one day, or currently walks to nature school, and it's terrifying, honestly. I mean, every day you don't know if your child is gonna make it home from school or to school, because these cars just drive up the street really fast, there's a blind curb, and, and for that reason, I think it's really important that we limit the traffic on Sycamore through signage or any other means as possible.
I second that, that was my speech.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Kathy Kaufman, as you know, and I know most people know how incredibly upset I am because I make a lot of noise about it. So I guess what I'm struck by in, in talking about it, first I just, as I always do, I want to thank you guys for your efforts, and I want to say that I really believe that the structural, the work on the structural changes is really, really important, and I'm really proud of the village for doing it, and I understand that it takes a long time, and I have no impatience with the village for how long it's taking to do that right. And I'm really very happy that you guys are taking the time and investing the effort in getting, you know, a real plan as opposed to haphazardly and ad hoc way making these changes. I'm very impressed with how systematic that process has been, and I really believe it's important, and the education, of course, is really important, and I think, but I do believe that we've exhausted what we can do with education, and we will exhaust what we can do with structure, and I am, I am just flabbergasted by the lack of enforcement. And I, I just don't really know what to do with how frustrated I am about that. I, I find it unimaginable that we could ever succeed at this with giving out what is in effect, one, you know, less than two tickets a year on residential streets.
For speeding, I don't like, there's, I mean, there's, this was, there's 500 speeding tickets and 2,500 tickets.
Yeah, I live, I have much less fear of, you know, of other things than speeding.
Well, it's me, if you get a stop sign or...
Stop sign. I just don't understand why we're not taught, like, why, I, I mean, I agree with absolutely everything you've said all evening, and what everyone says all evening, but I don't, I just feel like the community is owed an explanation for why we are not giving out speeding tickets. I know we've been short-circuited, I know, you know, blah, 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 but I, I still find that we do have, you know, 20, at least it says on the website, 22 full-time officers in the police department and two full-time employees, and I do not understand, I'll tell you, I do not understand how or why we're giving out, what is it, 549 speeding tickets on Broadway and less than, and five in three years on residential streets, when people are begging and coming in here and crying about how afraid they are to walk around the village, myself included. You know, I could go on and on, I think you all understand, when I met with the, with the residents of Main Street and Ecker Street about traffic, I met with elderly people who literally do not go out except in a car, because they're afraid to walk on the street, they're afraid to cross Main Street. And it's a self-exacerbating problem, because the more afraid people are, the more they drive, the more fearful they are of walking or having their children, you have, you hear people all the time say that their children, that it's too dangerous for their children to walk to school. So therefore they drive them. And to me, I am just incredulous that we can even, we can sit in a room and spend hours on this and not have anybody just explain to the village why we can't give out more speeding tickets. The whole idea about needing to distinguish between whether it's our neighbors or not befuddles me, because I've lived in Irvington for 25 years, and I would gladly have my neighbors ticketed.
No, I think it's more, to me, it's more the behavioral change, because...
Myself included, I would love for somebody to give me a ticket. I do not, I want a ticket. I do, I want everybody who speeds in this town to get a ticket. There is nothing more as, how we said, there is nothing that makes a greater impression than you have getting a ticket, because how, what, how many do you get? Before you have points against your license, and it has real ramifications, and goddammit, when you walk out of your house, you know, at late, you think harder about it the next time. And I'm sorry, I just, I just don't understand, and I don't feel like we've been given enough of an explanation for why this village can't enforce the law. And, and I also feel that doing this as a volunteer effort with our hardworking Board of Trustees and our hardworking committee members is absurd. You know, volunteers cannot run a village. We can direct people on how to run a village, we can get feedback from our, the rest of our community, but in the end, it's the people who are on the payroll of the village who must, if we're going to do this, they must step up and do their jobs. We need continuity, we need accountability, we need, for this to be enforced at a personnel level. It can't just be people busting their asses like you guys that are gonna make this happen. On a day, you know, we can do it this week, we can set up a great plan next week, but six months down the road, we're gonna be coming back here, and I feel like I'm gonna be coming back here in, in, in my old, in my old age, saying the same thing, unless we have a staff that is responsive, that takes, that it has, can bring leadership to this job, and unless we have people who are supervising that staff, who can make that happen for us. And I can't think of a more polite way to say it, so I'm just saying it. And I, I know that you guys know I'm frustrated, and I hope you know I'm not frustrated with you. And I, you know, I know that, that, you know, people hear me and I'm loud, and, but my frustration is not with the people who work hard and volunteer for this village. I appreciate everything you do, but I do not believe you can do it alone without responsible management at the village level. And I want that for myself, and I want it for you all too, and I want it for this committee that's worked so hard. And I will not be quiet until it happens, because there's a lot at stake, there's a lot at stake with this issue. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Matthew Michigan, I also live on Sycamore, as well as, we have three residents from Sycamore here tonight. So first off, I'd just like to say I have a little bit of a different take, I have noticed at least since the last Capitol meeting that I have seen actually further enforcement, specifically on Sycamore and also on Cyrus Field Road. I can speak only anecdotally to those two, because those are the roads I normally drive on, especially the dummy car, I know what else to call it, but...
Ghost car.
You know, I'm sorry, the...
Ghost car.
Ghost car. Ghost cars, my, ghost cars...
Sounds cooler than dummy car, right?
Exactly, yeah, I did know, I did, but I think that that's, that's been one of the more effective ones, because that's an instant hit that breaks, kind of, so I have appreciated that. And also, yeah, particularly, I think I've seen Officer Walsh, I've seen him more often than at Sycamore, he's made an effort to communicate, which I appreciate. One concern I do have, though, we've been talking about behavior, we're talking about education, we've been talking about enforcement and changing how people think, and I worry that, you know, for instance, Broadway is an easy catch, you know, it's a good place to be, you're near anything, and where anybody's going, and also you're gonna hit people moving the fastest. So, Sycamore, you know, Cyrus Field Road, all these are not as frequently used, and if you place a police officer, you sit them there for eight hours, how many people are they really gonna nail? Is that a proper allocation of police resources? I worry about that, I think about that issue, and that, I think that, you know, we've talked to speed humps, we'll see them here on the, on the suggestions or other forms of passive enforcement that don't involve someone sitting in a squad car for eight hours in one spot to catch one person, meanwhile they're not serving the rest of the village. I don't see that as a proper allocation of resources, I don't particularly have a answer what would be a better method, but I feel like if you're changing behavior, passive methods can work, which is why we talked about, for instance, speed cameras, to the extent that that is legal and possible, speed humps, to the extent we have money for this, and there's engineering for it, and so on and so forth. I would see, for me, a more of a focus on those methods of changing behavior. And I think that that ultimately, I feel, would be more helpful, it would be a better allocation of resources, and not just the village, but also given to the police department. And also, the fact that when we did see the proposal, I, almost everything that was talked about, brought up in that work session in October, really was in that proposal, and it does show that we are listening, whether or not everything could be implemented, there is at least, you know, feedback, this is actually, does work, so please continue, thank you.
Thank you. Walter?
Having sat where you all sat, I do not want to prolong this immediacy, so I promised not to repeat myself, but I couldn't resist saying a couple things, I listened to some of their comments, and one, I need to give enough credit to the, to the village administration, to Eric and Chief for physical changes that were made over the summer. We had a 60 to 90 day plan over the summer that was implemented, that had, you know, important changes, like enhancement of crosswalks, new signs around crosswalks at the Abbey Road, things like that, and that was, that was progress. So there has, there have been steps forward that have been meaningful. At the same time, I reiterate, we'd like to see, here I am repeating myself, we would like to see intensified efforts...
You're trying to reiterate, yes.
Right, but not repeating myself, I would also like to say, data, I believe very much in data, but I would stress, too, that data can be misleading, as we saw in 1948 and also in 2016 in the election. I didn't ask, I could see it for you, I didn't know it, but in any event, the point, the point, the point is data can be misleading, and here's the way, here's one way it was gonna be misleading. New York City did a study of pedestrian deaths, and concluded that the majority of pedestrian deaths were caused by cars when they turned corners. And so what is that, that's not speeding, that's a, and it could be, but it's not necessarily speeding, probably in most cases it's not. Uh, so, the speeding is very important to capture with the data, but it's not enough. We also need to capture erratic, irresponsible behavior. And you can be going within the speed limit or at least the five mile cap or the speed limit on a place like Station Road where we have a new fifteen mile or we'll have a new fifteen mile limit, thank you, there was another change over the, over the summer. You can be going in the speed limit or within that five mile an hour cap and still be driving irresponsibly. And the police need to deal with that kind of issue too, but that's not gonna be captured in the data. We just need to keep that in mind. And, and I think police presence is gonna be a big, big factor going forward, although I'd say we need, we need to sustain the educational work. Actually, I have a hard time separating the educational work from the enforcement work, they're all part of a single whole, at least if I might. And just one other point with regard to data, there have been questions raised about the effectiveness of these radar signs we've talked about. I know the chief of the organization said he actually believes they are effective. I know from reading some neuroscience studies, but there's a good explanation as to why they're effective, a good scientific explanation as to why they are indeed effective. So I think they are worth investment, at least a little bit more investment on the part of the village, as long as they work. And I believe Larry needs, you know, he's got a lot on his plate, he needs some additional help in making sure those things work. Thank you.
Sure. How many non-Broadway speeding tickets were they giving?
Five.
Three years.
And then, that's speechless. I mean, I don't know, what's the name of the road that goes into Field Point, I think it's called Field Point Drive? Anyway, I drop off my son there with friends and there are people flying in there. And I can't, I can, I don't wanna repeat myself, but to amplify what Kathy's saying, five non-Broadway speeding tickets in three years and we, we should go to Plan B. That's my opinion as a law enforcement officer, too, Plan A's not working. Thank you.
I will just add one sentence. I agree with the gentleman that talked about the passive methods. I would just say that before anything is implemented, like speed bumps or whatever, the, the local residents should be given a chance to consent. On Sycamore, they may want speed bumps. Personally, I don't want speed bumps, I want some other method. And it would be disconcerting if there were, uh, you know, construction and people kind of, on the other side.
Yeah, I think there's actually, I think the local law, you have to be approved by a certain percentage of the...
We have to do that on the emergency thing, is we pull everybody out of the block before we put the speed bump, not because the law required it.
Speed bumps are not always the fantasy yet, there's, you know, there's, it slows response times for emergency vehicles, it slows...
We had signed petitions for everyone at Langdon.
Yeah.
No, they came in with a petition, but they were, yeah, we made sure that you got every single person out of the block and everybody was up there.
Yeah, because there are, there are downsides, even plowing and things like that as well.
Can I speak back here, please?
Sure.
The October meeting, something was stated, and I actually called the police, kind of, it was in effect, and if it is, I think it's a method that might work as a warning to the people who are doing things that we see, um, that we could call the police, let them know that someone who may have gone, raced through a stop sign or blocked a street, whichever, and, um, license plate, we don't have to give our name, and they would get a letter stating that you, you ran the red light, this is a warning, please be aware. I think that would affect people before getting that ticket.
Yeah, the chief, anyway. The chief would do it.
Is it, is it working?
Yes, I've implemented that program.
Okay.
Got a lot of responses, people do call, matter of fact, there's, I've got three on my desk, I gotta go out tomorrow morning.
Okay, so that's something that...
Any, any traffic issue that you see is to notify the police department. Again, uh, we can issue a summons, but we can issue a warning.
Well, I'm all for warnings first, especially since we've lived, you know, with that, it's very hard to go fifteen miles down Main Street on Saturday, you know?
I'm totally aware of what you're saying.
Or Halloween roads, whatever. So I find myself, I have to say, I have to compliment the designer of all these signs, we've picked every town in every city that I've been in, but, uh, they, they see them, they give the message, and anyone, I have to tell you, a lot of us are affected because those of us who put signage out, guess what? We're driving better. I am driving better. I make that full stop now, I used to stop and roll.
Chief, I'd like to report to the woman at the back.
You have one of the yellow stickers.
I can say my name.
Eric, sign her up for a pace car.
Please do, if you see any, anybody, if you see anybody that's a violation, just notify the test, a little under license plate, we'll send a warning letter to the registered owner of the vehicle. Because sometimes it's not the parents, the children that are driving the car, and they are the issue. And we'd like to get ahold of the parents, let them know about how their vehicles are being operated.
I've seen a lot of calls just on the weekend, you know, the same.
I, I actually had, when people, when you started with the pace car, and I saw pace car drivers being nuts, I went out of my way to get the license plate and the chief followed up. And almost every time he called them or he got a response and they said, "That was my husband, it wasn't me." It was pretty funny. I wasn't able to verify that.
But that's why that little sticker that goes inside the car, you know, is really key, which is a great thing about the pace car program. You get a little sticker, my husband has it in his car because he would forget that it's on the back of the car.
That's true. Do you actually need your name for the record?
Yeah.
That's a crime.
I'll tell you later. That was years ago, actually.
Bingo.
When I was young. Um, I have to thank police chief again because the signage that went up, I guess it was over the summertime, I had spoken to him about it in the spring and he encouraged me calling to make sure it was going on. We got a sign on, in four Sycamore saying state law, do not block, it's not working. Why? By the way, can we get a second one on the far side as well? What happens is the car is halfway past it and then they block it for a red light, which doesn't make any sense. But I think if there were a second sign, it would work, or a box, but you said a box is harder to get.
On, 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 on State Road, yes.
On Broadway.
On Broadway, yes. The state has approval.
Okay, so I think a second sign would, would be very effective. They, they give us one, excuse us.
Yeah, there's a box, it's boxed out by the church and it's also boxed out by one side.
Okay. Um, local traffic only on Parkside and Sycamore, which has been mentioned, so I'm just confirming that. Um, on Parkside, we did get the driveway sign, but it's placed before the two driveways that you do see. There are three driveways, particularly the third one, which is, has no visibility. Um, Eric and Melissa, I can't remember the last name. If we could get a second sign on the lamppost, I go down all the time to see the best place. Lamppost would indicate either blind driveway or more driveways as they go around that blind curve.
I'll have to take a look at it. We put Broadway markings there, as you know, and we put additional signage, we put Broadway markings on Sycamore Lane. We have done a lot in, uh, working in conjunction with the DPW, uh...
Oh, you've, you've been amazing. I, I've seen...
We try, that's all we can do.
Now, I think you've done a fabulous job.
Thank you.
I really do. And I, I don't think people realize that we had nothing and now there's signage all, and I'm, in addition to the signs, I mean, I mean the signs that you have gotten for us. Look at Station Road, there's millions of signs, don't swivel. You know, fifteen miles an hour, uh, whatever, but I, I think you've done a fabulous job and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Any parting shots? All right, thank you all for your input, we appreciate it, we appreciate you. Next is an authorizations or brief change order number three, four, and five, for the everyone in town, all projects.
Just a minute.
Larry, uh, who we got?
Thank you.
Thanks again for marrying me.
Sorry, you're that, Larry. Just kidding.
Okay, so there are, there are three change orders that are being presented, relatively small, um, given the size of the job. These are change orders actually that have been accumulated over the past, actually probably ten or eleven months, they've been identified a long time ago. Previous contractor had failed to move them forward and actually give us ones that made sense. This contractor is, is doing things correctly, so, uh, the first is, is a change order reflecting a modification to the, uh, the sashes of the, uh, windows that are being refurbished. There's a certain method that the window contractor is using which will match the windows in the Tiffany Room.
More labor is it?
Yeah, it's different than what the specifications had, um, so there is a, there is a labor differential, but this is, you know, this is a change order that was originally presented to us at forty-one thousand dollars and it's now being moved forward to ten, which is the appropriate number. That's the difference between the two contractors. There's a, another one involving, um, the casings of the window that have to do with how the storm windows are being mounted to the outside, there's not enough, there's not enough of the, to actually mount the storm windows, so this will be a modification to fix that.
Is that all the windows, first and second floors?
Yeah, basically is. And the last is a, a glass block unit that was in the, uh, emergency staircase that wasn't originally called to be replaced, so, eight hundred dollars. That's it.
I think you gave me some good news, Larry, it looks like Minnesota windows replaced on Friday.
Yeah, well, uh, the reinstallation process on the second floor is scheduled to start on, uh, Friday, when this building, well, the offices are closed actually.
It'll all be frozen.
Yeah.
Does that mean you get a row of windows, isn't it?
Larry's going last, because he's a team player.
Yeah.
He has to turn on the TV to know the weather.
Exactly right, or just stay here night.
Well, I know today it's windy.
Result approved, change order number three for additional work to the interior or exterior of sashes by window contractor in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Change order number four for exterior casings, removed and replaced by window contractor in the amount of twelve thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. And change order number five to replace entire glass block unit window and rear wall by Mason in the amount of eight hundred and seventy dollars for a total amount of twenty-three thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars. And authorize the village administrator to execute said change orders. I'll make the motion, you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Renewal of the intermunicipal agreement to form a task force aimed at drug and alcohol enforcement.
I mean, this, you're a spark, I suppose. This is, this is very, very straightforward, this is the, the task force, the Greenberg Drug and Alcohol Task Force that, uh, the village has been involved with since probably the late nineties. So it's not, not a, this is not a new thing, this is a...
Even when I was in high school.
Look at you now.
Cut me on the straight now.
So this is a renewal, a renewal of that agreement simply, and it's been reviewed by our village attorney.
Result approved, an intermunicipal agreement between the towns of Greenberg and North Castle and the villages of Ardsley, Dowsbury, Elmsford, Hastings, Hudson, Irvington, Tyre Town, and Sleepy Hollow to form a task force aimed at drug and alcohol enforcement. authorize the village administrator to execute said agreement. I'll make a motion, you have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reports of boards, standing committees, and officers, trustee liaison reports.
Okay, uh, well, standard reporting is that tree commission and environmental conservation board are always looking for members or people who are interested in seeing what goes on. And, um, if you are interested, you could contact myself or Larry and I'm sure you, we would give you the time and date of the next particular meeting. ECB meets in the, uh, the last Thursday, I think it is, of the month, or the second to last Thursday of the month, and the, um, tree commission meets, uh, oh, I'm gonna say the first and second, and it's first and third Tuesday of the month, and I could be wrong again. Uh, anyways, also the, as you probably know, the, um, uh, traffic committee is always open to have people work with them, either on the committee or as a neighborhood liaison, liaison. Talk today. And would, and, uh, so you could probably contact again myself or Larry and we'll get you in touch with Walter Montgomery, who's the traffic czar.
Uh, no, he's the ombudsman.
Oh, wow.
He provides that one.
Okay.
Very sensitive.
Um, so, we, we still get him. That's it.
Christina, I hope you prepared a song, that's our tradition here.
Actually, just hand it back to me later, I may have something. No, but right now I just wanted, I don't know if, um, if it was mentioned before, but Thursday morning, Thanksgiving, uh, there's the Thanksgiving meals delivery program. So there'll be a whole bunch of volunteers and runners delivering Thanksgiving meals to people in the village.
And what we just did today actually was the thanks, senior Thanksgiving dinner at the, um, senior center. And, uh, a number of us volunteer regularly for that, it's quite nice to be able to serve the seniors and, um, yeah, fun was had by all, I guess.
Ninety-five seniors.
Wow.
It was that cold out there too.
I don't know if all ninety-five showed up, I think, I think they were...
Buzzkill Larry.
We have uplifting Larry and buzzkill Larry.
Eighty-five seniors and Larry, the other ten.
Yes.
Actually, it inched up, they, they weren't, they didn't meet the number, but people kept filtering in, so I think we probably reached nearly that, nearly the, uh, ticketed number.
It's a good, it's a good time.
That's nice, very nice.
I do have some parting words, but I'll, when we're done.
Okay.
Connie?
Ah, sorry, me?
Yeah.
Okay, so the theater, um, the, you know, and it was the theater commission, as I do most months on, in November, um, they also had a very popular event, uh, the film, the shorts film, I don't know who went, um, my husband went, I didn't make it, but it was almost sold out.
Such a fun idea.
Yeah, it's, it's, people send in short films and they actually pay to submit, so it's not that you just pay to come, you pay to get your, your, your amateur film into the, the festival to be looked at, to be considered, to be shown, so it's, it's a pretty good, good plan. So, um, you know, they're working on a, on a few things, um, you know, and, and you all know that there's, um, there's an effort to start fundraising once, um, the theater entrance project is, the feasibility study that our board has, um, put some money towards. After that, they can more effectively do, um, a fund raising, um, effort, which is, it would be a very big deal to change that whole entrance. The historic district committee has continued to, um, work diligently on the, the guide document and that's still in process. And, um, what are my other liaison?
Housing, but you kind of...
Oh, housing, yes, that, yes, I knew there was, yes, the housing, um, yes, committee, um, I don't think we've met since the, but I, I have been in touch with Rose about this whole thing, about the, um, affordable units. And this is, would really go to you, Janice, but since I went, I will mention it, the library, um, on Sundays, five times a year, has classical music concerts and they are free and they're at, uh, four o'clock and they usually have thirty-five, forty people. More people should go, they are fantastic. This was a cello player, a piano player, um, you know, you sit up so close to the, the cello player, you can see the calluses on her fingers, you know, it's, it's a very good musical experience.
You're self-conscious.
Yes. You really want to...
You don't have to look at them.
You could close your eyes, you could do it many different ways. But, um, yes, and, and I'm not the liaison, but I do love, I do love those concerts. Uh, I think there are, there are some other things about the, um, the farmer's market, but I think we talked about them last time and I think this was their last, this was their last outdoor, and then they'll be moving into, um, the Main Street School for certain Saturdays. Yes, okay.
Well, there are tons of programs at the library, which they advertise on their website, and if you walk in, the notice board in the front, I am always amazed at how many things go on in that library, evenings, weekends, for all age groups, so please do check it out. In terms of our highway department, um, the Hudson View Park curb replacement and drainage project is complete. Our guys assisted the wreck and parts department with the turkey trot this weekend. Um, winter equipment, just in time, is being presented. And, uh... And our people attended the Westchester County Safety Symposium on Sanitation and Recycling, installed new signs and painted new crosswalks per the traffic committee, so that was part of what was discussed tonight by the traffic committee, but that also involves our highway department and cleaning catch bases. And the water department, which we heard did a great job of saving money this year. So, they're reading water meters, full maintenance of water department properties, installed storks fittings, which they've been doing around the village, and doing high bill checks. So, if you, your bill is suspiciously high, let them know. Show off our water to Sina Hudson, this is another one, we heard that no longer will we have bathrooms in Sina Hudson for the season, but that means the water department has to go and shut it off, and then shut it back on again in the spring. And there was a broken service line on Trail 10, which is fixed.
Oh, yes, I have one other thing. As, as I think everybody knows in the public, there's been this concern about the barge anchorages on, on the Hudson River, and our board did a resolution which we connected to the waterfront alliance. There was a meeting of the waterfront alliance in Yonkers, and none of us could go, so we found another interested citizen to go, and she reported back that it would be helpful in this effort, besides the wonderful thing we did already to make this resolution, to send that resolution again to the Coast Guard, because there's a total number of counting of resolutions, and our resolution was part of the waterfront alliance. So, we got the information from her attending, and I think we'll just ask Larry to go ahead and take this address, and it can, individuals can do the same thing. They can send a letter directly to the Coast Guard, it's a Boston address, and reference a particular docket ID. So, perhaps we could put that in the minutes, and other people who want to add to the number of people who send and say we don't, depending on what you think, probably don't want barges anchoring in, in this area of the Hudson. So, I'll put that to Larry or Brian or somebody to get the info. Thank you.
Before we go, I just want to mention that, I forgot to do this during the traffic safety piece, but we received correspondence from Josh S. Friedman and Monica Levy of 75 Rock Broadway, Renee Richmond, Vicky Weg, and Mark Halleck. So, I just want to, as you know, we had, had received your, your correspondence, we helped write it, and I just didn't mention it during the extended hearing there. Everyone up here, okay? Village officials?
Nothing tonight.
Village clerk treasurers report?
I think we're good for tonight.
Village attorneys report?
No, no report, just wish everybody happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, and it was a safe and joyful turkey trot this.
Oh, yes.
Christina, do you have anything else?
Yeah, no, I just, I'd like to say, thank you so much for earlier, I was not expecting that, I'm very flattered, thank you. I, I'm sorry that this ended up being more short-lived than I thought it would be. I would have liked to have made more of an, more of a contribution, but I am definitely walking away with some very wonderful memories and lessons. And I, I just want to thank some people, real quick. I'd like to say thank you to Gerachino on the rep department, RPAC Base, and the community advisory board, Greg Nielsen, and the tireless DPW staff, Bestin River Towns, Maybe the World, Chief Shroon, and our, our awesome cops, Chief Taracco, and the entire volunteer guard department. I'd like to say thank you to the Irvington Democratic Party for helping me secure the opportunity to do this. And I'd like to say a very special thank you to the board, Larry, Mary Ann, and Brenda. I, yeah, I've remarked on this a couple of times, once I think in an email that I sent to Larry, to you and Mary Ann, but I just, I think, I could say a lot, I think four words really sum it up. Talent, competence, dedication, and wow. I just, I don't think that residents of this village have, have a clue as to, just like the degree of creative tireless work that, that goes on behind the scenes, that helps us secure and maintain a great quality of life, helps protect taxpayers, maintains, like, just the, your, your work constantly safeguards the best interests of the village, and I really thank you, especially now that I'm returning to civilian life. But, and Mark, and Connie, and Janice, and Larry, you two, I mean, so, so smart, and the, the time and effort that you put into doing this. And Brian, I mean, you, I, when I think about my time in government before I served, and throughout this past experience, for people in executive positions, I've never met somebody so judicious, balanced, reasonable, sensible, smart, and I hope, like, you should be running one.
I forgot handsome.
That's it.
And modest.
Yes. I think we are lucky that you're, you're running, or helping to run Irvington, but I, I mean, you should be running the world, maybe. So, no, really, or at least.
I'll take that over handsome any day.
Maybe the country, sorry. But, and also.
That might be an insult, actually.
But I also, I just want to say thank you so much for your patience over the last several months, because I know I've been, it's been touch and go a few times, and I'm sorry for that, but thank you for your understanding, and I will always, I will always sing your praises and continue to cheer you on. And I do hope to get back into public service at some point sooner rather than later, but in the interim, I will definitely encourage my peers to get involved. I'm sorry that there aren't, there aren't younger people kind of stepping into, into these types of roles. But it's so worthwhile, and thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's always great to follow that up with public comment. A lot of pressure on Larry there. And review of action items?
Yes, we do have action items. The statement that you read at the beginning about tolerance will be posted on the website. The, we'll be following up with the building department on the email regarding rock chipping, or more appropriately, the rock pile, so we'll follow up on that. And then the barge resolution to the Coast Guard, I think in between was all the traffic, which is plenty, plenty of items to follow up on, on the list already. And I do have a request for an executive session for, for two matters. One is regarding a union negotiation, and the other is regarding a volunteer personnel matter.
I'll make that motion, something executive. Okay, well, one more time. What's that? All in favor?
Aye.
So, we're adjourning to.
Executive session. So, I'd like to say Christina one more time, and say happy Thanksgiving, one and all.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.